Good morning, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the Mesa City Council Study Session for the morning of June 22. All of our council are present. First item on our agenda is a presentation and to receive an update on Mesa's Public Safety Mental Health Response. Oh, look at that, yes. Thank you. Thank you, Amanda. I like the "All-America City" button that you put on your presentation.
Yes, good morning, Mayor and Council. My name is Amanda Freeman, and with me I have Commander Michael Bellows, Assistant Chief Rankin, and Assistant Chief Smith, and we're going to give you an update on the 911 Mental Health Response Project. So our agenda for today is to talk about the big picture. I'm going to break the program into two parts, Part One and Part Two, and we'll go over some related results, and then we'll talk about next steps with the program. So the big picture right now is when someone calls 911, they talk to a call taker in PD Communications. That call taker then is gathering information, and they make a decision on whether it goes to Fire, to PD, or to Crisis. We'll go into more details on the next slides. So Part One of the program is call diversion. What this means is that when someone calls 911, they talk to a call taker, and the call is sent directly to the crisis system. This path is highlighted in orange on the slide. PD and Fire do not get sent on these calls. No Mesa resource is sent. This path started as a third option in June of 2021. In 2022, we diverted over 3,500 calls directly to the crisis system away from PD and Fire. You can see here that the number of diverted calls increased by 90% from 2021 to 2022, and the success of this portion of the program is solely because of the call takers in PD Communications. We also have a crisis liaison who is co-located in PD Communications to provide our staff with real-time training and support. The crisis liaison who is co-located in our call center is not taking the calls; they are monitoring and researching calls, and they are acting as a resource to our staff. This is Part One. Any questions about call diversion?
I'm sorry.
Sorry. I just want to... The clarification, so the crisis liaison is not the crisis specialist. This is not the first... So the call taker goes... If you determine that should be diverted from Fire or Police, it doesn't go to the crisis liaison? Okay, this is just a person?
Who sits in our call center.
Okay.
Here, I'll go back to the orange. So the orange path means that's going to the call center, that is the county call center.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the crisis liaison is in our call center.
Okay.
Does it make sense?
I think so.
The 911 call goes to a call taker, because at that point, it's just any call coming into the city of Mesa.
That's right. It comes into PD Communications.
We have the call takers now have been trained, and they're... Do we still have a Solari person standing there with the call takers? So that if they determine... They're listening in those calls. That call comes into that city of Mesa employee call taker. If it appears to be a call that could be handled through the crisis specialist, then it's diverted away from either going to Police or Fire Dispatch.
That's right.
Is that fair?
Yep.
Okay. Does that help?
I think so.
Okay.
Did I hear you correctly that it's diverted outside of the city of Mesa?
Yes, so...
It goes to the county?
No Mesa resource is sent. It's sent directly to the county.
Yeah.
I have a question. I've been in the call center several times, and so the Solari person is actually in the call center, the 911 call center up on the PD side, correct?
Yes.
And so the call taker and will send the call over to the Solari person. It does not go there?
No.
So then where does it go after that?
So the call... Mayor and Councilmember Freeman, the call taker is going to send the call to the county crisis system. The purpose of the crisis liaison who is in our call center is just to provide our staff with real-time training and support, because it's important that they feel confident in the decisions that they're making, and so if they are concerned or if they're worried, they have a resource, a subject matter expert who's there and who can help them.
So Amanda, what that concern is, the call taker has to make a decision about, well, does this go to Police Dispatch?
Right.
Maybe Fire Dispatch? Or can I send it to the county, which is staff... Which the county contracts with whom to take care of those calls?
So that's Solari, who is the dispatch center.
So that's why we have to... Solari gets used in a lot of different terms here, but at that point, they are serving as a county-wide resource.
Yes.
For Maricopa County. But it's giving that confidence to that call taker that, yes, this is a kind of call that could be handled by the county's Solari services.
So my question to follow up, the Solari person, does they talk to the intake call, the person who's calling in?
They talk to our call takers.
They just talk to the call taker?
That's right.
All right, that's not how I thought it was working.
I think we'll get a bigger picture as this progresses, but Julie.
Everyone else got to ask.
She asked her questions.
So, but we have Mesa Solari teams.
We do.
Just call taking.
We're just talking about... Okay, so when you say like no Mesa resources...
Yeah, just let's just focus on the call. This is what I would call the first generation of our response.
Oh, okay.
This is how we started.
We're going... We're having a history lesson right now.
Yes, just so you can understand, because it's important in context that it's not just about the teams. There's oftentimes, we can avoid even ever sending any team.
Okay, so, but I did think there were some calls where we would have a crisis team go out and PD or and Fires.
Yes, we're going to get to that, yes.
Okay, this slide makes it seem like that never happens, like no Mesa resource is sent if...
On the call diversion.
We're just... We love this program, so we're all just trying to wrap our brains around how...
I'll go back.
I think it's a force multiplier that we're trying to say is, there are times when we don't have to send, because of the way we can manage these calls, we won't have to send anyone.
Anyone, okay.
But that counts before we are always sending somebody, right? So, okay.
So that's why we have the program broken up into two parts, is because it does get a little bit confusing. The call diversion is Part One, and then the Mesa crisis teams are Part Two. And that was the other reason to have the map here, is to sort of show that there's all these different pieces that are a part of it. So again, the orange path is when the calls are diverted, so that means that no Mesa resource is sent, and it's getting sent directly to the crisis system. And so then Part Two are the Mesa crisis teams, yeah.
On the call diversion, do we have an idea of how many... What percent of our total calls are... Of the total calls that come into our 911? What percent... And this is numbers, but what percent is this representing in our total calls?
That's a good question. It's not a huge number. The last time we calculated it, it was at, I think, 3%,
Okay.
but it's still 3,500 calls.
Yeah, yeah, and it's talking about man-hours, as far as, you know, the elimination of the hours out in the field that are not necessary.
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
Are we good? All right, so Part Two are the Mesa crisis teams, which were launched in July of 2022. This is different from Part One that we just talked about. We have two crisis teams that are dedicated to the city of Mesa. These teams are through Impact and CBI, and they are available for response to PD and Fire. The teams contain a behavioral health technician and an EMT. So the box highlighted in blue are where the Mesa crisis teams fit into the big picture. So these teams are being reserved for when PD and Fire request them. So right now, if PD and Fire get sent on a call, they can request a team through our communications, either when they are on scene or en route. The teams are available from 10:00 to 10:00 every day, and the next two slides have a couple of measures related to response times, call types, and usage. So what you're looking at here is a comparison of median response times, median monthly response times. The orange bar is the monthly median response time of the Mesa crisis teams. The blue bar is the monthly median response time of when a police officer requests a county crisis team. You can see that having our own crisis teams has cut the response time in half for our residents, our firefighters, and our officers. So what you're looking at on the left, or the pie chart, are the top five call types that the crisis teams are being requested on. So the top five call types are suicide attempt or threat, subject disturbing, family fights, agency assist, and welfare check. On the right is the number of monthly requests, of average monthly requests for the Mesa crisis teams. So right now, the teams are being requested about 80 times a month. Any questions on the numbers I just showed you?
So the crisis teams are those that go with sworn response?
That's right. The two Mesa crisis teams is what we're talking about. So moving forward, we currently have a variety of feedback meetings with PD and Fire Communications and Crisis at all levels to keep things on track and looking for ways to improve. The crisis team members have done station visits and ride-alongs. We have attended battalion chief meetings, as well as PD briefings, to advertise the program and provide any clarity. We have monthly meetings with boots-on-the-ground employees to hear how it's going, address any concerns, and answer any questions. Moving forward, in an effort to integrate the crisis teams even further, we plan to send them to the CIT training that our officers go to, that's crisis intervention training, as well as provide situational awareness from a public safety perspective training. Moving forward, we look forward to expanding the program. So what you are looking at here, the graph shows, over the course of a 24-hour day, so the numbers along the bottom are the hour of day, starting with midnight and going to 11 o'clock at night. This is when police are requesting a crisis team. The data here is from July of 2022 to August of 2023. The orange portion is when a Mesa crisis team is sent, and the blue portion is when a county crisis team is sent. The purpose of this graph is to show that even when the Mesa crisis teams are staffed, there is more demand, and that extra demand ends up going to a county crisis team. So it is staff recommendation that we add an additional two crisis teams for a total of four Mesa crisis teams. The scheduling of these teams will be determined on peak time and current usage. You can see here that the current annual budget is $1.2 million. Adding two additional teams is $900,000 for an annual total of $2.1 million.
And Amanda, we should mention that right now, and for this addition, this was to be presented, we were discussing the ARPA funds. So for the period through the end of ARPA, the proposal is to continue funding to... Well, we have the funding in place for the current teams, and to add additional teams and utilize those ARPA dollars to do that. And that assumption of that cost was included in that summary that you saw last Thursday. We'd already increased that. There was a line item in that sheet that Irma showed you. It already had made that assumption that we would add these additional costs. So that's the funding source, at least through the period of the... We have the ARPA dollars just spent.
And what is that doing?
The end of '25 ARPA dollars?
Oh, in '26.
'26, sorry.
Into '26?
Yeah.
So are they...
Please.
Trying to wait my turn. Problem with that. So are they Mesa employees?
No.
The crisis?
We contract out.
No, this is a contract.
Yeah. So we use the ARPA dollars to contract with Solari to provide these teams. And the two... The teams that are currently being used, that was one of our first priorities when the ARPA dollars became available, is to stand these up.
Oh, good, sorry.
Well, I was just going to say, and it was very helpful, because when we first got the guidance from the Treasury about how we could spend the dollars, this fit very well. And so especially talking about behavioral health, mental health responses, because back, that was about the time when this was really becoming acute awareness of this issue across the country. So it was just fortunate, we'd already established the relationship with Solari on the dispatching, and so we kind of were able to take this to the next level. And now, having had this current experience in monitoring this, and the feedback from public safety about how helpful this is, and you can see that demand curve, and I think, you know, I think public safety met on this, and we all determined it would make sense to keep adding additional teams going forward.
Yeah, it seems like a great program, and I can't wait to hear a little bit from you all on how it works, but, I mean, on your feedback of it. But just curious, why do we not... Why are we trying to bring these numbers to zero for the county? I'm just curious.
Thanks for that question, Mayor and Council. So a couple of thoughts on really why this has been so successful as we've started to move this thing forward. Really, what we're trying to do is we're trying to bring a resource to bear on a problem that is acute, a problem that traditionally we've sent public safety resources to handle, which may not be the resource that's best equipped to handle these types of situations. And so the success of this program really has been two key points. Number one, the consistency of the resource being available to the officers and firefighters, and number two, the time or the speed at which that response can get to that scene. Because the short story is, when you have a firefighter, you have a police officer standing on the street waiting for a resource to show up, the difference between 20 minutes and 40 minutes is substantial. And so we've... Historically, we've had this resource from the county. This is not a new resource. The thing that has made this so successful for us is that response time has been cut in half, which means that the ability to utilize this to connect the proper resource to the proper situation has increased substantially. And so with the addition of the four teams, what this is going to allow us to do is expand the coverage, when you look at that chart, to the other high-peak areas, and again, data-driven to its need, but the goal would be to have 24-hour coverage. That's where we'd like to start, but to remain flexible enough that we can actually put that resource to where it is best utilized. When you take a look at those county team utilizations, there's more than enough of these mental health calls to bring a Mesa resource to bear, and as we do that, it's just going to continue to increase the utilization and effectiveness of this program. And so from a PD and a Fire perspective, we are very grateful, because it allows, from a human perspective, that ability to connect the right resource with the right situation.
Mike, can you also speak to... I think there's an added value to the familiarity of them working, that these teams are just always working with Mesa. I mean, Amanda was talking about working with the CIT training, going out and meeting with the staff, so it's not we're calling in a county resource, which is wonderful, we've always had that.
Correct.
But now having teams that are specifically assigned to Mesa, developing that rapport, that team concept, is there value to that?
100%. And so when you start talking about the ability for effective communication, it's built on trust, and it's built on shared experience. And so as we continue to grow and continue to work with these teams, they're... These people aren't county people, they're the people that are assigned to Mesa, so they are these same people that we work with on a consistent, regular basis. And it's just like, as we work together, we become more effective as a team. This county resource, or I'm sorry, this Mesa resource has become part of the team of our mental health response between Fire and the police officers. And so as we become more familiar with, we trust more, we utilize more, and it just becomes, again, an effective use of our resources and of our money and of our, again, the human factor of connecting, you know, somebody that's in crisis to a response or to a resource that can actually help.
Frankie, and then Julie.
Couple of questions on... From the call-taking side, goes to the county call center. I think I understood the program was, there is a Mesa-specific call takers. Is that not the case at the county? Like, trying to figure out, is everybody buying into the service at the county level? And if Mesa is buying into call-taking service with contracting with Solari and taking at the county level? So that's my first question. And then as far as on the call-taking, is there... Is a call longer when it takes... Like, how... Is there any data as far as how long does a call take for this type of call coming into the system? So that's on the call-taking side, and a couple of questions on the response side.
Mayor, Councilmember Haradya, excuse me, you have a really good memory. So you remember a portion of the contract that we created when we created the relationship with Solari to have these teams, which was, it's not our dispatchers who dispatch the Mesa crisis teams, it's actually the Solari dispatchers who dispatch. And so because of that, we have a person who sits in Solari, who is dedicated to Mesa to answer the call when our dispatchers call them and say, "We need a Mesa crisis team." So I think that's what you're remembering. That is unrelated, though, to actual call-taking. That's when our dispatchers are requesting a Mesa crisis team.
So when the call comes in and they request... So the dispatcher sends it to the county crisis piece, is there Mesa-specific people there, or is this just a county-wide effort of how then they get dispersed and then called to the crisis response person here? Is that how the flow, I understand?
So it's a county-wide effort, but, again, it's broken up into two parts. So if we're talking about call diversion, that is that a Mesa call taker sends that call over to the county system, and then Mesa doesn't do anything else?
Amanda, let's be clear. When we say county, we're still talking about Solari.
We are talking about Solari. Maybe I should say Solari.
It's just that... Because Solari, that's what's made this thing work so reasonably well, is they already had the contract to provide the service across the entire county, right? And so what we've been able to do is take what they were doing on a county-wide basis and bring it and put resources just for Mesa. But it's still Solari... That's why I think this works so well, is that there's this integration. Solari is county, Solari is the Mesa team too. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Is that answering your question?
Yeah, so I understand. So Solari has this larger county contract that takes incoming calls, right? And so now we bridge that into a crisis response team in Mesa that takes in those calls that get diverted from 911 to the county to us, right? Is that the flow for that response?
I'm sorry, Mayor, Councilmember Haradya. The diversion is you call 911, you talk to a PD call taker, and you say something like, "I'm having a really rough day, and I need to talk to somebody." And they send you directly over to Solari, and you talk to a crisis specialist at Solari. And then that's where it ends. Well, it could end with, like, you get a team from them.
Sure.
But again, that's all county.
Sure, sure.
On the Mesa side, if a police officer or a firefighter is requesting a Mesa crisis team, they call someone in Communications, in PD Communications. PD Communications calls someone in the Solari dispatch, and then the Solari dispatcher is who dispatches out the Mesa crisis team.
Okay.
And it's set up that way, because it was already... All the infrastructure was already set up, and so it made a lot of sense to just tap into theirs.
Okay. And then so that dispatch, the two teams that we have, right? Those are where? Are they in Mesa, or that the Solari county?
No, so they're located in Mesa.
That's the nice thing, physically.
Physically, they're located so that they can respond...
Yes.
Appropriately in time.
Since we're paying for them.
That's what we're paying, yeah.
And that's why the response time is as good as it is, is because they're located in Mesa.
Okay.
But you saw there are times when we have both teams. We've already called both teams, and that demand, and yet we still have more demand, and we're still then calling in the county teams to come assist. So theoretically, I guess, there could be three Solari crisis teams in Mesa at any one time during that period. It appears.
Correct.
Is that correct? Yeah.
Julie.
So I love the trust and relationship and the response time. Like, I think that all makes perfect sense. And so are our current crisis teams ARPA dollars as well? Our two current ones are also ARPA dollars.
Oh, yes, yes, correct.
So all four would be ARPA dollars?
Correct.
So I think we're going to want to still use these four teams after 2026. So do we have a plan for that? Like, we don't want to have this amazing program that is so good for our community.
Obviously, that's something we'll have to start planning on.
But so while we have the extra funds, we're using it right now.
Correct.
But this isn't a program we're planning on going away or anything after.
I think after the results...
With the success that we're getting, okay.
Ms. Duff.
But looking at the cost, I'm sure there's an offset, and not in the traditional form of sending out sworn teams that might be mitigated through Solari. I would think, and that would be maybe difficult to think, but there is an offset. What that is, I don't know, but there is a savings in being able to take care of these calls with the appropriate response that does not require...
Police officers.
Police officers or a firefighter or paramedic or whatever.
It makes them available, more available to the other level of responses, right?
Right, so we have quicker response. So if it was taken... If this didn't exist, our response times would decline, and our costs would be greater than they are now. I don't know what that is.
It just puts more pressure on the resources we have for responding with police and Fire, absolutely.
So I think sending the appropriate response, because our number-one thing is the care that we're giving, and they're sending the appropriate team for the appropriate crisis, right? And I think there is an offset. A team is... Who is a team? Is it crisis specialist and an EMT? Or who is the two... Is it a two-person team, right?
Mayor, Councilmember Duff, the teams contain a behavioral health technician and an EMT.
Okay, okay, great. And then I just had a comment from something I had learned at a conference, that some cities are, you know, using this model, of course, but I thought it was interesting that one city said that on homicide calls, they're actually sending out a counselor or behavior specialist with a call, because in those moments of homicide or like that, there's sometimes a retribution or a reaction around this, and plus the people that are affected suddenly. It mitigates subsequent reactions that would, you know, be ongoing. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
So Mayor and Councilwoman Duff, a couple of comments on that, because you are 100% right when it comes to the ability for us to continue to utilize this and to find additional ways to utilize this resource. Anecdotally, when you start thinking about the reduction that the police officers and firefighters are... For the types of calls that we're seeing on the road, you know, historically, when you think of the holiday seasons coming in, we would listen to the radio, and we would hear call after call that was mental health-related, suicide-related, and others. And this last year, we did not. The significance of those types of calls that are being diverted is noticeable to the firefighters, and it's noticeable to the police officers who are responding to these calls. The ability for us to continue to find ways to utilize this resource is only going to get better. That homicide ability to send a resource to somebody who's grieving and has been, you know, impacted by a violent crime is just one of the things that we might be able to utilize and continue to utilize these teams for. Homeless outreach and other things where, again, the human factor comes in, the ability to send a resource that actually can make an impact and connect them to ongoing resources as opposed to a firefighter or a police officer who in the moment can solve the problem is huge. And we'll continue to see the decrease of that public safety resource being utilized for mental health, and continue to see it utilized for the purposes that it should be, which is, of course, the medical and criminal response in our community. So again, the appreciation from both the Fire and the police officers for the ability to use this resource moving forward. Thank you.
Can I also mention, one of the things I think is important that Solari brings is not only their expertise on managing the mental health, but they have the partnerships in the community, right? And so they bring all those connections, whether it's CBI or...
I can't remember all the names. Impact.
Impact. They can make... They can connect individuals with those resources too. So that's a huge help along the way.
And I think it also stops subsequent calls. I know someone told me a story about her brother who was suicidal and calling 911 and then being, you know, addressed with a police officer. And yes, at that moment, it mitigated, you know, the issue, that person is safe, the neighborhood is safe, but there was... Actually, she was telling the story, it almost made it worse, because now the neighbors are coming over, what's wrong, you know, seeing and everything like that. You still... You still, you know, residing with the issues of being suicidal. It just diverted it, it just stopped it for that day, but how about the next day, and the next day, and the next day? So that would be maybe another call and another call. So getting the appropriate response is stopping the continuation and getting the help. And I think those are the stories of making it very personal and how it not only improves our response time and all those logistics, but just on the human level of making a difference in someone's life. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. It couldn't have been said better.
Mr. Freeman, and then Alicia, did I see your figure on the button?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Amanda, is there a crisis counselor, Solari, here this morning? Could she raise her hand or hurt? Yeah?
Wendy from M.
Okay, well, thank you for being here and listening, because standing up this programming for our community has been awesome. Been a proponent of this ever since we first started this. And I know it's challenging, but you're doing a marvelous job in our community. Amanda, I was just pulling together some of the graph and metrics, and even between 2,200 hours and 0,700 hours, there's a big gap there, county response time. And then I counted like 93 calls, that's from, that's excluding the 2,200 hour. So it could be 120-something calls between 2,200 and 0,700. And there's no Mesa response team during that time. Is that correct?
Mayor, Councilmember, that's correct.
Okay. So with that, it just shows the need for standing up additional teams in our community, and that allows, you know, a faster service to whomever's needing it. My question to both police and fire, to the chiefs, is how is patrol and fire adapting Boots on the Ground to this programming? So I hear from Chief Ray Ked, and then maybe Chief Smith, if he wants to say anything.
Good morning, Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, Council. One of the things that was brought up earlier by Commander Bellows, and I think it's really key points that really impact the thought of officers on the ground. The response has to be quick, it has to be efficient, and it has to be consistent. When the officers are making a decision on whether or not to utilize a resource, that resource has to be available to them. You know, officers have multiple calls throughout the night, they understand that they have to move from one to the next, and spending an additional 20 minutes out on the street waiting for a resource that may or may not come plays into their decision-making. So when we talk to Boots on the Ground, this is what we're hearing, both from the police side and the fire side, is that they have to be consistent. And given the flexibility that we're looking at with these additional teams to cover ideally 24/7, then once we get those repetitions in during those later hours, then our officers will know, and our firefighters will know, that those resources are available to them. So that's what we're hearing, and that's what we're intending to do with Council's approval, to provide those services throughout the evening.
Okay.
Good morning, Mayor. Morning, Council. And Councilmember Freeman, yeah, really, I'll be amplifying, pretty much just going to amplify what they've all been saying. Because what also happens on the scene is that, and I've had an opportunity to talk about this before, when you're out serving the community and feeling that you may not have the proper resources at one time, then you feel like it's still an open loop. But now we have the ability to be able to utilize these teams to be able to then close these loops on the type of care that some of these folks need. So rather than having to go to the emergency room, of course, go in and getting proper care, and as the gentleman were mentioning, as Amanda was mentioning, is that that reduction in that response times increases the probability that our crews are going to consistently go back to get those crews out, rather than ship those individuals off to the emergency room, which we know at times, especially during flu season, can mean days just waiting. And so having this resource really has changed the dynamics of the calls. Anecdotally, I've been told by some individuals in some of our stations and areas where we have higher amounts of calls, which we would call site Bs, they've seen a decrease in those calls. And sometimes it may not be anything that they happen to say notice, but they look back and reflect and say, oh, wait a minute, I haven't been on an X-type of call in some time. And even if it does get past that particular net and we're out there, having the opportunity and the ability to still get crisis coming allows us then to clear that person medically and then get them that proper treatment. So really closing that loop up, and another thing to add is engaging even the social services team that we have, where they work collaboratively. And they work with Amanda and with that team, and they find that, to Councilmember Duff's point, is what's happening later. So crisis within work with our social services division, which is working with the county, which is working with other resources within the city, whether it's the homeless task force and some of the other groups, then to find their proper resource. And that way, we start decreasing some of those high repeat callers. And so those high utilizers are also be able to work through this system where we're working with the social determinants or if there's a behavioral side. So thank you.
Well, thank you. As I listen to that, I just think about the response times and the need for the teams to stand up. And especially, and I consider it back to my fire days, we kind of have a mutual or automatic aid response with the county team, with the Mesa team. So that's important for consistency in providing the services. So standing up, you know, whatever the costs are for the team, I'm in support. I know we haven't even got that far, but we'll move forward with that. Thanks.
Okay. Amanda, is there more to this presentation?
No, sir.
Okay. I just want to echo what's been said and thank again the Solari representatives that are here, and I appreciate the good use of, this is a good use of data, isn't it? It helps us make good decisions. And so, Mr. Brady, Amanda, thank you for being engaged and making good decisions based on data. And I think the takeaway here is the more Solari, the more better. So, and given the data that you presented, it seems like maybe if we know in those off-hours where we're going to rely on the county, that there's going to be X number of Mesa calls, I just wonder if they might think about moving one of their county teams, you know, to their Mesa location, just because they know they're going to, instead of making it a 45-minute drive, let's make it a 25-minute drive. But I'm sure that's obvious, and you folks are thinking about that. I appreciate Commander Bellows talking about the human perspective. That's the main motivation for doing this. This is better service, and these are people in crisis. And so that's the number-one motivation, I think, behind what we're doing. But for those who maybe are, that's not enough for you, I would point out that whenever we send a non-sworn response, I would think that it greatly de-escalates the potential for confrontation. And there is absolutely a fiscal, you know, component to that. If we avoid one or two use-of-force incidents that we then have to litigate, I mean, the investment, you know, is dwarfed by the savings by doing this correctly. So this is very encouraging, and thank you for the, and I think, as I've gone around nationally, I've had the opportunity to talk about what we're doing. And mouths drop, you know, at a national level, because this is what communities are all talking about doing. And it's nice that Mesa can come in and tell the story of, we have been doing this for years, and here's the numbers, and we're still getting better at it. But I think we are ahead of a lot of other communities on this. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, item 1B is a presentation and to discuss current downtown parking inventory, including the proposed purchase of the downtown Hibbert parking Mr. McBay.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Jeff McBay, manager of Downtown Transformation. And as you know, we're here to talk about my favorite topic, Councilmember Spillsbury. I'm ready for you today. So let me get started by kind of giving you an overview of where parking actually stands today. And I hope one of the things that you can take away from this graphic is, we don't really have, we don't really have an issue with availability of parking. We have 5,000 off-street public parking spaces. What we have a problem with is the location of that available parking. So of that 5,000, more than 3,000 are really kind of not well situated to support new business activity or even to support new development. But they are where they are because they support our city facilities. So the majority of those are related to, you know, a city hall, the convention center, library. And they're needed to serve those facilities, so they aren't really necessarily that best situated to support the business activity that has been increasing and actually leading to our real challenge. So what I've tried to show on this graphic is, the red and blue is all of our downtown public parking, off-street public parking. The blue on the map, though, are those that are best situated and have the highest demand for the new business activity. So there's around just under 2,000 public parking spaces that are under that blue, that are highlighted in blue. Of those, about 1,500 of them are available for permit parking, and 416 are available for time-limited customer parking. You've heard me say it all the time, every time I come up here, we don't really have an issue with customer parking. We have the supply that we need to be able to support the businesses, or the business activity during the day. During the day, there's only 416 time-limited spaces, but that's with the understanding that after 5 o'clock and on the weekends, there's a total of 1,900 parking spaces within that blue that can serve all the business activity. Some of the issues, though, that we are facing is that there is that limited availability of permit parking. We've had a lot of new businesses come into downtown over the last few years. A lot of them have asked for permit parking, and we have sometimes been able to accommodate that and sometimes not able to accommodate that. One of the reasons for that is that there's a large percentage of our downtown permit parking that is devoted to our city employees. I apologize, I say 44% of that is of the permit parking is city employees on this graphic. It's actually 40%. I had to, we updated some numbers in between when I loaded this, so it's a little bit lower, but that is still a pretty significant percentage. And I think one of the reasons that that is as high as it is, is that as great as our efforts in the development of the city center is with ASU and the new plaza, we eliminated 230 employee parking spaces by doing so. And those all had to be absorbed within the existing parking inventory. And I'll also note that over time, over the last few years, we've also had to convert approximately 50 time-limited parking spaces within garages into permit parking spaces to be able to absorb some of that demand. Drooling down a little bit on the city employee parking, the majority of our staff that works here in the downtown area are parking in the three parking garages that we currently have, the Pepper Garage, the Centennial Garage, and the Serine Garage. You can see in the Pepper Garage, that's a significant, almost half of the public parking, permit parking in the Pepper Garage is for city employees. And I'll note that that one is of particular interest, because the Pepper Garage is the one that's most best situated to support the new business activity and even to support new development in downtown. The Serine Garage, the percentage is the lowest of the three, but I will note that the Serine Garage is the one that is going to be best situated in the future to support the redevelopment of 51 through 55 East Main, which we're currently underway with a feasibility and concept plan for that redevelopment. With the employees spread through these three different parking garages, we have had concerns voiced to us, and actual situations occur that, you know, address, that have caused safety concerns. There is always the concern of convenience of the parking, the proximity to City Hall. We do have a shuttle, mornings and evenings, golf cart shuttle with security officers to help, you know, go pick people up in the garage or take them back to the garage. Some people show up very early in the morning, and sometimes very early in the morning, there are other folks utilizing the garage not for parking. So that has been a concern and something that we have been trying to address through improvements to the lighting and adding call boxes, things along that line. Yet, we've also had some issues with damage, vandalism, theft of city vehicles, tailgates and catalytic converters have gone missing. So the fact that we are parking our vehicles overnight in these garages has also been a One answer, and the reason why I'm actually pleased to talk about parking today, is that we have the, we have an opportunity to address much of these concerns and also improve the condition for parking in downtown in general with the purchase of the Hibbert parking garage. Everybody will know what the Hibbert parking garage is, you know, originally the Brown and Brown vehicle display lot. It is a massive structure. It is three stories. It is on almost three acres. It was originally designed for vehicle display and storage. So once you go in and actually reconfigure the parking and striping so it can support true parking, it would be able to accommodate approximately 900 spaces. What are, if purchased, our proposal, proposed use for those 900 spaces within the Hibbert Garage would be to relocate 600 city employee parking spaces to the Hibbert Garage. Now, what that would do to address employee concerns, granted, if you look at this map from a proximity perspective, it is fairly similar in walking distance from other garages, a little further than the Pepper Garage, but better than the Centennial Garage and about the same as Serine. But the one difference I will note is that that walk is going to occur, would occur along Main Street, which is much better, has much better visibility and much better lighting. In addition, our intent would be to keep this as a secured facility, so that it would be badge access only. So just the storage of vehicles, the theft of vehicles, things like that would not necessarily be an issue anymore. In addition to the 600 spaces that would be for employee parking, we would also reserve around 300 spaces for permit parking that could support new private development in the vicinity. So we have been working on this for a little while, and we have been negotiating with the owner of the property. We are recommending purchase of the garage at $8 million. With that purchase, the seller would retain an option for 300 parking spaces that would be there for supporting the new development. That option would have an initial term of five years with two five-year extensions based on performance, meaning that there was actually private development that came that was supported with that parking lot. During the time that the seller had that option, during those 15 years, the city would have the right to use any spaces that they did not exercise an option on or license. So that means that we could support other businesses, we could have additional employee parking, we could have special event parking without restrictions. Once the seller would exercise an option on their parking spaces, on the 300 spaces that were being retained, that would initiate a parking license. The parking license term would be 45 years initially with two 10-year extensions with a total, for a total of 65-year parking license. The reason it's 65 years is that, you know, in order for a bank to finance a new private development, they need to know that the parking that is provided that is sufficient and long enough term to justify the financing, and generally, that's somewhere in the range of 50 to 60 years. Important to note is that we would only provide these licensed parking spaces to support new private development. This is not something where the parking spaces would be able to be used as a commercial parking facility, where they're just selling parking spaces to somebody coming in for the day. They would be allowed, though, to sub-license those parking spaces, again, to the end user. So if a developer says, develops a site, and then there is a restaurant within that site, they would be able to sub-license some of their spaces to that restaurant to meet that restaurant's demand, as long as it's part of that new development. You can see at the bottom, the license rates that we have negotiated. It's important to note that our current parking rate for covered parking is $45 a month. So this would provide a minor incentive for that first five years of a reduction of $10 per space per month, but quickly escalating to the point where they would be paying market rates for the spaces that they licensed. Some things to consider when related to this purchase is, while the Hibbert Garage is well-built and structurally sound, it is not necessarily meant for public parking. And if we are to move our employees in there, there are safety and access improvements that would need to be made. We've estimated those, we've done a study on the facility, and we've estimated those in the range of $3 to $4 million. So all told, with the purchase of the garage, I think it's important to note that the purchase cost per space would be in the range of $12,000 to $13,000 per space. In comparison, this is an issue that we have not, that we have been dealing, have been looking into. We have done a very high-level analysis of the Drew parking lot, that's the one behind Heritage Academy, for the location of a parking structure. Heritage Academy, for the location of a parking structure. However, a 400-space, new 400-space parking structure would have a cost, total cost of around $21 million, so about $54,000 per space. In addition, Willman Construction, who's the contractor for Eco Mesa, has had very recent experience in building a parking structure in downtown. They completed an estimate for us for a comparable 900-space parking structure, and that, from economies of scale, that was a 300, I'm sorry, a $30 million facility, would be a $30 million facility for $34,000 per space. So from a, from a, just a general cost efficiency perspective, the existing structure at $12,000 to $13,000 per spaces is a significant savings over building a new facility. Having said that, we are still completing studies on new facilities. There is a feasibility study being completed right now for the surface lot behind the Mesa Art Center for a new parking structure. Well, purchase of the Hibbert Garage will go a long ways to, to solve or to start addressing our parking issues. I don't believe that this will be the last time that, that I'll be up here to talk to you about this topic. Some other thoughts to consider in, considering the purchase of this garage, is that right now, we have 600 employees inside of public parking facilities that generates no revenue for us. If we were able to relocate those 600 employees to, to the Hibbert Garage, there is the potential to increase our existing, our current parking revenues by up to 40%, just by bringing those spaces into service for permit parking. In addition, the 300 spaces that we would be holding for new development in the Hibbert Garage have the potential of generating up to $3 million, nearly $3 million in revenue over the course of the 20 years, based on the license rates that we have negotiated. Now, I, I would, I would say that, based on those, those considerations alone, the Hibbert Garage seems a reasonable purchase, but we also did complete a, an appraisal of the Hibbert Garage, and it appraised at just over $11 million, and that was just completed earlier this week. So, with all that being said, our intent is to come back to council on July 10th with a purchase agreement and a licensing agreement for purchasing the Hibbert Garage. If council agrees and approves that purchase, we would move forward quickly with completing final design and cost estimates for those improvements to the garage, so that we could have those constructed as quickly as possible, and we could bring this garage into service and open up those additional parking spaces for the broader downtown. So with that quick overview of our, our favorite topic, I'm happy for any discussion.
Mayor, can I just quickly jump in? We have been contemplating this acquisition since the day that AutoNation left downtown. We've, we were actually, because the history of the site is that the city of Mesa actually provided the land for that parking garage to incentivize a car dealership in downtown Mesa. And at the conclusion, and the idea was that by doing so, that when, that was no longer a, when it no longer continued to operate as a car dealership, then the dealership paid back the city the $2 million of the cost for that land, which they did. And we quickly just took that $2 million and set it aside, because we recognized that we were eventually needing that, gonna need that for some parking solution downtown. We, over the last, well, I guess that's been maybe 13 years, 14 years, have recognized that at some point, we would, we believe that we would be acquiring this parking garage. So I, and I don't remember my names, maybe it was 2016, 2018, when we sold the Thomas and Recker property and where we allocated dollars, we got $21, $21 on the auction, we set, some of that went to build out additional park space, some of it went to pay down the ASU building debt, and, but a large portion, five, almost 5.3 million of that, we kept for, again, for additional, identified it as supporting downtown parking solutions. So you have the $2 million from the original transaction, we have 5.3 million from Thomas and Recker, and then there was some additional sale of property downtown, the South McDonald and First Avenue property, which was about 700, a little over 700,000. So for the last, again, 10 years or more, we have been setting aside dollars for the acquisition of this parking garage. So we, we will be able to cover that cost, just because we've been thinking about this for a long time, so we're glad to be at this position. I will tell you, the economic development part of this is important to free up opportunities to leverage new development downtown. We've incentivized this parking garage, the additional spaces that we won't need to, both in the availability of the 300 parking spaces for new development, as well as the incentive in the license rates for that, those spaces. We're try, obviously, we're trying to motivate development around this area. We think hopefully that will be an attraction. But I will tell you, the one, number one thing, as the city manager, my responsibility to city employees is making sure that they have a safe place to come to work, and that has been one of the, the most common, frequent comments I get from city employees that work in downtown, is how they do not feel safe in some of these parking spaces. And so that's become a, a significant issue for us. We've tried to address that through a variety of issues, but just the fact that they're, they're so remote, and sometimes they come in very early. So we are hoping that the consolidation of this will really help us to try to address that convenience and safety for city employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Ms. Spilbury.
Thank you for this. So on that note, Chris, is, the, the facility would be secure, obviously, so they would feel safer in the, in the facility. But what about the walk from the facility down to their offices, like early morning or late at night?
Thank you, thank you, Councilwoman Spilbury, Mayor, Councilwoman Spilbury. So I think what we're gonna, we're gonna contemplate is we'll continue the shuttles, so we'll have those. I think the, we can address the walk. I think, we haven't had this conversation, but the, the challenge with this Hibbert Street, or Hibbert Parking Garage is the entrance is on Hibbert. And it's okay for coming in for parking, but as your, that's a long walk. So I think we're gonna try to look to see if we can put in, at least a, what do you call it, like?
Pedestrian, pedestrian access points.
Where they would use your card or something?
Right, but have it on the corner, the west corner.
There's currently an emergency exit door on that corner.
Right, so we have to expand that, so.
Just to, so they wouldn't have to come around that corner.
All the way along there, yeah. And so we'll drive, well, I think we're gonna look at that. We'll look at the, working with the Jason Property, is it Auto Network Auto, and trying to make that a safe place. But I think, I think Jeff made a very good point, having our employees out on Main Street, I think that helps. You know, there's a great concern, we just had this discussion yesterday, crossing Center at Pepper has been a very dangerous intersection. We've had employees and cars getting T-boned, it's, it's a very, it's just because as they're coming down Center, and they're looking at the light on Main, they don't, they don't see the one on Pepper, and we've had so many close calls. So anyway, anything we can do to avoid that, we think this will be a, a safer transition. Plus, once they get across the street to the Plaza, then that's lit up, there's activity. Yeah, so I think, we, we think this is a better situation overall.
Well, and once Melody on Main is all done and finished and being used also, it should help that area, I think.
And, and I'll also note is that currently, we have three separate parking garages, and we have security patrols on golf carts going through each of those early in the morning and helping drive people back and forth. We also have PD going through at certain times of the day to just have that passive surveillance, and that does help with some deterrence. But it's pretty inefficient when you have to separate out amongst three. We can much more efficiently provide that same type of passive surveillance when there's just one facility, and they're only watching essentially one stretch of road to, to get employees there.
And then just my other question. I, I think you pretty much already answered this, but I was gonna ask about the southwest section of Main and Center, of like, can we put a parking garage there? Because it would be a lot closer in proximity to the art center and restaurants and City Hall and stuff, but.
What did you say?
Well, Main and Center, but, so the southwest, I mean, behind Heritage, where he was mentioning.
Oh, oh, oh.
So, so you have looked into doing a parking garage there, it was just really expensive.
Very expensive. I will, Mayor, Councilmember Spilbury, I will say, though, that, that, that parking lot is one that several years ago, we had an initial concept proposal for development there, and I do believe that it will still be an attractive lot for redevelopment at some point. And with that redevelopment, we would have the opportunity to, well, the redevelopment would be required to replace those parking spaces one for one, but we would also have the opportunity to consider additional public parking as part.
Just because the location of that is just so much more proximate to like, areas where the people would want to be parked and closer to get to things. But I, I mean, obviously, it sounds like this makes a lot more sense financially to do something that's already existing and just create it, so, and it, and it's huge, so I don't think we could get 900 spaces behind Heritage anyways.
It would be a very tall parking garage, but you could do it.
Right. Okay, 'cause that, I, I mean, I'm sure you've probably looked at every option you could possibly come up with, but.
Well, and I would say this, that's a parking garage that's in downtown Mesa, it's a pretty prominent structure. It, we believe it'll, it'll work well for city employees, and by moving them out of those other parking garages, that it frees up some great opportunities, we think. And frankly, I think it's better for the city be in control of that parking garage, even if we weren't gonna use it for city parking, we were excited, because that's going to be a, it's something that's gotta be dealt with, right? That parking garage, it takes, it's just, I mean, coming down Main Street, it's a major visible structure. So I think for us, we can go in there, we need to dress it up, we need to work on it, but it, functionally, I think it works very well for us. Because there's really no other user that's gonna need that kind of magnitude, right? So I think we're the right user for this, we've planned on it for a long time, so I think it's the right move. And again, just getting out of those other parking garages and maximizing those for other purposes, I think is a good idea.
Great. Thank you. Good job.
Frankie.
Is there any public parking use for this? I'm thinking like Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Would it be open to the public when employees are not there? I'm thinking like large events, like the Elmo Mortos and, and other activation pieces that happen here, that the public on weekends can use.
Sure. Vice Mayor, currently, we aren't thinking about just leaving the doors open for general public parking, free-for-all kind of parking, but for events, for large shows at the Mac, for, you know, celebration of freedom, any of those things, it would be ideal for using it as special event parking.
And DMAs.
And DMAs are already asking for us.
And we've, we've told them that would work with us. They would be, if they would take over that responsibility, then, on the weekends, then we would make that available.
All right, perfect. They would like to be able to use it before even improvements are done.
Yeah, they would. That's true.
And I'm, I'm, would it combine with like people movers at that point with DMA as where, because it's far from maybe, you know, the Mesa, Mesa Music Festival, right? Bunch of people wanna go down to Ora Brewery or Cider Court, so you need like, some people movers that, you know, either bikes that are.
We need more developments.
More, yeah, stuff like that, that.
Activated.
Yeah, we can look into that.
It's far, it, it's a far walk, right, for people?
We are, so, we are currently.
It feels far, right?
We are, we aren't currently coming asking for, for a shuttle service yet, but I do, I think that would be.
Specialized events.
I, certain events.
Electric icicle concept is a great idea that we've seen other developers use. I think something like that would work.
Yeah. Scooters, we're gonna have a stack of scooters right out that door. But I, you know, certain special events, it might be within their, in their interest to provide shuttle services to, to get the patrons to where they want them to be.
Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Jeff. So when I try to park downtown, obviously, there's metrics about all these colored spaces that you can park in. So obviously, they'll be combined and put over in the Hibbert Parking Garage, like there's maroon and white and black and.
Yellow, green, silver, tan.
Yeah, so, are all those kinda being, can put together and move it over to the Hibbert Garage? Then does that free up any public parking?
So we will, we will, in the existing garages, they'll continue to have all of the permit parking signs, as you see them today. And, use Pepper as an example, the, the colors that we care about are light blue and yellow, because those are all where the city employees are. And that's the 200, well, I, I say we only have, we have 600 parking spaces city employees use, we actually, or 600 spaces, we actually have like 650-ish employees that are using those spaces, because we oversubscribe them. What this will do is that those spaces will remain designated as permit parking by color, it's just there won't be a city employee assigned to it. So we can reassign and sell or permit those spaces to the, the other businesses.
Okay, got it. You know, having the money to purchase it, Mr. Brady, does this include the TI work as well? I didn't put all the numbers together.
No, right now, it includes, the acquisition is covered for sure, and the others will look at, again, we continue to see quite a bit of increase in construction sales tax, so I think we feel comfortable it'll cover the rest that way. But the acquisition price, or acquisition dollars, we've been setting aside for the last 10, 12 years, I think we're in good shape.
Okay. Again, back to the parking places, after 5:00 PM, are they available for free public parking?
Every single one of those, 1,900 well-positioned spaces are available after 5:00 PM on a weekend.
Today they are.
I guess I missed that.
One of the things, Councilmember Freeman, you're, you're starting to touch on something else that we're working on for parking, so outside of this, we're also going to start looking at better signage for our existing structure.
Well, that's why I was gonna say, there's not good signage that indicates, you know, public parking free after 5:00 PM.
It's very little letters at the bottom of a sign that somebody, and we are going to make a sign program, not only for wayfinding to the parking, but also to help really let people know what's available and when it's available.
Okay, all right, that's all the questions, thanks. Any other questions?
I'm cross all.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, I have to comment. So the timeline, are we looking at 25, or the timeline in which you think?
Oh, to do the improvements?
Yeah.
You know, I would say it'd give us a year, just for the time, because I think I'm gonna be asking for some things that, from security and lighting, that I don't know about the electrical side of it, how much that's gonna, we're gonna have to upgrade that. Because I want, when I bring the employees in there, I want it to be right, and lighting and the gate security and the entrances are gonna be the big deal, so we'll have to work on that. But we'll, give us a chance to kinda go through and vet that, and we'll come back and kinda give you a timeline on that. We, obviously, we wanted it as soon as possible, because there are opportunities for development downtown that will be anxious to take advantage of us when we move out of those other parking garages.
Well, this is really good. Now, when someone says parking, we can smile instead of like, oh, do we have to discuss this? And downtown is just bursting at the seams, so many businesses opening continually, and the demand is only gonna grow, and we have so much on the horizon and still, so this is wonderful to have that availability, because I don't wanna be one of those downtowns, like, I don't wanna go there, because you have to drive around, try to figure out parking, I don't know where to, you know. The wayfinding, I think, and having those spaces available is really gonna be a huge economic return for us in downtown. So each one of those spaces close to our businesses are dollars, excluding employees, of course. And so I, I understand the employees being further away, but we're talking about the revenues for the city that pays our salaries and, and such, is very important in a downtown, the, the availability of space, parking spaces, transit, everything, is very central to the businesses, it's huge. So I think this is a huge accomplishment to be able to finally get a garage, and I love that it's an existing garage, because even though we have a year, a timeline, if it was to build it, it would be years and years out, and I don't think we could afford that. It, I think would begin to start impacting some of our development in downtown as it gets tighter and tighter. Now, the Hibbert, it sounds like it's so far away, but it's really actually a short distance. I know sometimes when I need to walk down, I'm like, oh, that's so far, but it's really a short distance. The problem is, there's not a lot of activation along there. And as we develop and have much more activation, we have the Melody on Main, we have the grid going on, we'll have this garage, which means more people, and there's some other, the 51, 55, we're starting to fill in that space between Center and Mesa Drive to become more and more active, and then it'll feel like the center of downtown, and maybe having those other mobile options, if you don't wanna take that walk, is to the e-bike or the scooter or other options. But the more people want to walk in your downtown, the more distance they cover, it's more dollars that they're spending usually. There's a lot of studies about that, and that you want a very walkable, attractive, activated downtown, and putting people around the shops and things. So I think it feels like it's a distance right now, but soon, you might be able to , as you park there, pick up a coffee, you know, right, right there, and make the walk and, and be enjoyable, and we have a lot of other development on the north side of Main that's planned too, so it's all going to work together. I think this is wonderful, thank you for all your work on it, I know it's been a long time. time coming, look forward to it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? At the risk of boring people, I'm going to take a personal moment, in 1996...
Yes, no, you need to say this, this is good.
The first time I walked into this room as a brand-new city council member, as a much younger man, this was the issue that was front and center, this was the issue that we dealt with, no, this parking garage.
For the car dealership.
The city's involvement in maintaining, keeping Brown and Brown, which was the number-one-volume Chevrolet dealer in the United States, in our downtown, generating huge amounts of tax revenue, the city played a role in the acquisition and the creation of this parking garage, and it was controversial. Because the other person who was newly elected in that meeting was the mayor, Mr. Brown, who was the brother of the Brown and Brown Chevrolet. So, as you can imagine, this was front-page news, you know, for, for all of those reasons. So I just got to say, I'm really chuckling to see this kind of come circle, you know, back to where this is now, coming back to the city of Mesa, and this is playing a huge role, and I think of the additional development of our downtown. Another personal moment, last night, I was forced by my family to go to a restaurant in downtown Phoenix, and to celebrate a, an event. And it was frustrating, and I drove around in, for a block, you know, for several minutes, trying to find a parking space, ultimately succumbed to, you know, paying expensive valet parking. And I think we don't appreciate that parking is not the Achilles' heel of downtown Mesa, parking is the reason, you know, we compare very favorably with other locations when it comes to parking. And this park, as Mr. Brady said, this, this is, we are the right user for this building. This, we get two birds with one stone here, because right now, we've got a huge unutilized building in our downtown that is just kind of weird, that we have this big parking garage that's not being utilized, and at the same time, we have a parking demand. So, we are the right user, obviously, the, it's a no-brainer when it comes to the math in terms of addressing our parking situation. But, again, I think we need to start shouting from the rooftops that parking is one of the reasons to come to downtown Mesa, particularly once this comes online. With Melody on Main, with the Site 17 development that will happen along, and Hibbert will become all of a sudden, you know, the center of the universe will shift slightly to Hibbert, between Melody on Main, all the activities in Pioneer Park, the Temple, Mary Main Street, this is in the, in the middle of all that. So I think it's, it's going to be, I mean, it's just obvious that this is, that we're lucky that this, we have the opportunity to do this. So, thank you for all the work that's gone into this. I know this has been very deliberate, very thoughtful over the last several years, and I think it's come to a good spot. So, Mr. Brady, I don't think, I think you, this is agenda is to provide direction.
Yeah, we'll be bringing, because it's not just a purchase, there's a license agreement, we'll bring you back on the 10th for final approval.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Jeff.
Thank you.
Next item, 1C, is a presentation and to provide direction on purchasing from Maricopa County property located at 245 North Centennial.
John Graham. He's a big developer. He, yeah, he's done a lot of projects for the city. Yeah, we were buying it too, but we couldn't outbid him.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor, Council.
Yeah, he bought it pretty soon.
Beth Hunning, Engineering, and I have with me this morning Lisa Davis, our real estate supervisor. We have been given an opportunity to consider the purchase of the building at 245 North Centennial Way, which is north of the convention center on Centennial. The county has recently reconstructed and added space to their facility down at Mesa Drive and Baseline, and have consolidated their staff down there. They are willing to sell the building, and they have come to us with the opportunity to buy it, because we own the parking that goes with this building. So Lisa's going to walk you through the particulars on the building and the costs, and we can talk a little bit more about just office space in general in downtown.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. The building is located South University and West of Mesa Drive. The site is pretty small, as you can see outlined in blue, it's a pretty small site, the building pretty much takes up the entire site. The parking is provided by the city-owned parking lot adjacent to it that's outlined there in orange. The site is zoned Downtown Core DC. We do have a 10-year parking lease with the county currently for that parking adjacent to the building. The building itself was constructed in 1986, gross building, square footage is the 2685, and the office space area is the 23860. The construction is red brick with frame, concrete slab of puddings, and a built-up roof. City-owned parking lot that we touched on there with the, that's outlined in orange there, the county currently has 91 spaces, some of them are covered and some uncovered. Save the Family also has a license with the city for 20 spaces. United Way has a license as well, and 180 spaces are dedicated to the hotel itself. Interior updates, although there was an update in 2013, there would still need to be some updates to the interior of the building to accommodate what we need as far as city uses, some removal of walls, ceiling replacement, paint flooring, ADA accessibility. And as you would anticipate from a building that was built in 1986, some building system updates would be needing, needed, the heating and AC, plumbing, electric, lighting, and fire suppression. The county did provide an appraisal, they had an appraisal done in February of this year with a value of $1,260,000. They did provide a reduction, because there is not parking on the site, of the $470,000. Just for comparison, some other city-owned properties that we have, that we currently have staff working in, 55 North Center was built in 1961, the original building, and then the wing on the north side of the building was added in 1964. It's a similar-sized building at 27,000 square feet. The studios, which is right next to us here, was built in 1959, it's a smaller, smaller building, 8,500 square feet there. Two other sites to touch on, 200 South Center Campus, there are four buildings there that were built between 1979 and 1984, ranging in size from 12,000 to 34,000 square feet. And the Fire Administration Building here at Center and First, the original building was built in 1962 with the addition in 1986. With that, I have, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
So, Mayor and Council, quickly. So there's a little bit of a history with this property beyond what Lisa shared with us. It was the adult probation office for the county for quite some time. It was a major headache. Frankly, almost declared nuisance for downtown, just because the adult probationers, and where this is located, they were always walking, not always, but walking through the hotel, walking around the hotel. I mean, from day one, I remember being called into the manager's office at the Marriott Hotel, wasn't the Delta at the time, and that's all he wanted to talk about, is what I was going to do to stop having this traffic walking through, and it was hurting his business. So for many years, we kept talking to the county about, you got to have a better option. I remember having conversations with Supervisor Tuchery several times about this. They kept assuring us that at some point, they were going to look for better, another location, and they commit, they, they kept up their promise, right? They've built out facilities there, their campus there, south of the 60. And I think because of our persistence and concern about the use of this property and the users of the property, they came to us early on, before, they've, they've not taken this property out to the market, they've not made it available, so they brought it to us first. And the timing is good, because as Lisa was kind of pointing out, as the city demand for space continues to grow, having, finding opportunities kind of in the super block of downtown, we have limited choices. We also have employees working in conditions that are really subpar, which is very unfortunate. Some of the, of our employees working in the South Center Campus, you know, I had a meeting with some employees, and someone raised their hand and said they were in the building where they'd gone to high school, and the bathrooms looked about the same as they did when they were in high school. That was pretty, that was, that hurt. And so, we, we have a need to continue to look for opportunities to upgrade the working conditions for our employees. They are, in some areas, they're, they're very subpar. And so, not that this is brand-new, but it gives us opportunities to move employees around, to do, I mean, this, structurally, this building is in a good place. Did you show the side of the kitchen?
Yes.
I think that's the premium, we're willing to pay for that. We think preserving a 1960s-era kitchen is, is unique. But, this is very chopped up, every, I think every employee that worked adult probation had their own office, and it's not the system, how we would do it, it'd be a more open system. We'd be doing a lot of demolition mostly, I think you're just opening things up. But structurally, it, we've walked it, it's close by, it allows us to control what's happening in that area around the hotel. We certainly believe in the future, we will have a need for it, and we control the parking around it. So I think that we're just positioned to do that. I'm not sure how that happened, I don't know the history of how we ended up with all the parking, but not the building, but that's where we are today. We think this price is very favorable, we appreciate the county doing an appraisal at the low point of office space demand, I think that helped us with this, and then getting the discount on the parking. So, we would recommend allowing us to acquire this property, and then we will continue to work for opportunities to make this available, to move staff around, whether it's at the Plaza Building, whether it's South Center Campus, we think there's a great opportunity for use of this property in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Council? Ms. Duff.
I don't have any questions, I just think this is really good, because this has been such a problem property for the surrounding neighbors, whether residential or business, just having this vacant is good. But it also gives us, at a great price, really, because it needs to be redone, an economic development opportunity. There's, beyond the office needs that we have, and moving people around for the city, whatever buildings we can free up and use for economic development of downtown, there is a demand, there are some proposals of people who have projects and looking for space. So it gives us more options in creating our future economically. Especially, this backs up to Site 17, so whether it's used for employees or some other use, that whole area is going to transform, and having this being a useful building that adds to the neighborhood instead of detracts is significant. So I think it's a great, a great move, and I'm excited that we're finally moving forward on this. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman.
So, thank you, Mr. Brady. This, you know, being the probationary building there, it was pretty dicey multiple times. And, again, my question is, historically, how did we own the parking lot, not the building? It's kind of a conundrum, we don't know.
So, Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, the, what we've heard is that back in 1986, when the building was built, the city was working to get more office buildings in the downtown. And as a result, they've put together an arrangement with a developer to do the buildings as long as we provided the land and the space for the parking. That's what we've heard, I don't have any way to verify that. Then, the county acquired this building in '91, and you may remember what was happening in '91 with the economy at the time. So, we have heard that an architect was in this building at one time, I don't have any confirmation of that, though I don't have any of that history, but, but that was our understanding.
Well, obviously, you've done your research, I mean, the bones of this building are pretty good, and the structural integrity of it, you know, the way it was constructed is great, so, and being able to do the TI work, you know, there'll be future estimates of that, I'm sure. The question I had, how are we paying for this building, what bucket are you taking?
It'll just come from our general fund capital, this is not a significant amount of dollars for us.
Okay, all right, thanks, that's all I have.
So just doing the math, the, we had a favorable appraisal, and then we got a generous discount off of that, because it's a building that doesn't have any parking, but it does for us, because we own the parking.
Exactly.
So what is the sticker price now, after we've talked to the manager?
That's the, that 1.260, that 1,260 includes the discount.
Okay.
That's after the discount, it was, must have been closer to 2 million prior to that, so...
I see. So, that's a, that's a really good deal.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion, Council? Yeah, all right, so I think that's providing direction in a positive way.
Yes, we will move forward, now, we will move forward with that acquisition, that will not come back to council, we'll move forward the acquisition on that one.
All right, thank you. Next item, item two on our agenda is to acknowledge receipt of meeting minutes, is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Ms. Duff and Ms. Spillsbury, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you, that passes unanimously. Next is current events and conferences attended. Council, Ms. Spillsbury?
On Tuesday, Councilmember Goforth and Summers and I attended the Mesa PD promotions and awards, and there was a ton of life-saving awards that morning. It was so cool to just hear all the stories and to see those officers be recognized, and a citizen be recognized for that, so that's always a great event. And then, yesterday, I was able to go out with Lisa from Safety Services, she took me out as part of the hydration program, and I know a lot of you are doing that as well, but it was, I loved doing that, and going out in the field. I think we hit like 10 different types of workers yesterday, we got lucky, we saw lots of different people out, and I just wanted to express my appreciation for all of those employees that really actually do all the work and make everything happen, and that are working out in the heat, and so that was a privilege to be able to do that yesterday. So I want to thank Lisa for taking me out.
Thank you. Ms. Duff.
Yes, on Tuesday, maybe at the same time of awards, I'm not sure, but I attended a Country Club corridor business meeting with Fiesta Police Department. And this is a regular meeting that they have in areas that, you know, businesses have challenged because of the activity around Country Club and the 60, there's, we have these regular meetings, maybe quarterly, in which the businesses get together, and they talk about how things are going, what things are working, what issues, and we discuss them, and over the years, since I started on council and been attending these meetings, we have the lowest crime rate, things are so much better than they were, this is, the engagement of these businesses has made a huge difference in the cooperation and working with PD and being able to turn around some areas that are very challenged. They talked about the Real-Time Crime Center, and how it's really helping Mesa in general, it's really rocking it, and they're seeing crimes that are not being reported and contributing, and there's more crimes than we sometimes can respond to, but it's made a huge difference in being able to keep our city safe by having that extra attention to especially problem areas. And I wanted to thank all the businesses and residents that subscribe to Community Connect, where you can take your register, that you have cameras at your home or on your businesses, and if there's an incident, that the police can contact you and ask you to look at a timeframe to see if there's any activity, and maybe use that to solve a crime. So, look for that, it's a great program, and it's helped tremendously in being able to solve crimes, it's called Community Connect. Thanks.
Thank you. Council, anything else you'd like to share with us? Okay, Mr. Brady, was our next meeting...
Thank you, Mayor, we'll see you on Thursday, the 29th, at 7:30 AM, and that will be followed by an Audit Finance and Enterprise Committee meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, that concludes our agenda, is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Ms. Spillsbury, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you, we are adjourned.